I am calling to order the meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners at 6:33 PM on the 19th of September 2017 for a special meeting. Now we have the one item I'm gonna -- just an admin note, please Commissioner Hofmeyer, Commissioner Frasch, I need your comments on the director, they were due last Friday.
Yeah, I forgot something. I'll give them to you tonight or tomorrow.
Okay. Are you gonna email them to me?
Do you want me to email to you or to...
To me.
Yeah, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Director.
All right, well, thank you. So, I asked Commissioner Holland to have this meeting because as I looked at the potential scenarios if we don't pass the levy in November, none of them are good. But I could look at about a thousand different scenarios from what I wanted to do with the meeting. Have a quick meeting with everyone who is involved in Arrow, what I think the focus might be so that next week at our regular meeting, we can present options for that eventuality and it's not the first time we're having a discussion on it. So, that's really the genesis of why I asked to have a meeting. So, you should have -- actually, you should have three things. One, I just put it in there tonight because I found it yesterday. You should have -- this is a baseline of a budget. It's not -- this is just something I started working with. It's something to work from. What I have in there are a few assumptions, but they're not the final thing to just work along to. You should have a two-page -- well, mine's different, but a two-page or two-slides per page of a PowerPoint thing. And then I found in our founding documents, cooperation agreement that's expired with the city that was made in 1981, and it's only five years, it was never renewed in 2006. But there was a provision in here that the city had the ability, this is on page three on paragraph eight, if you remember. But if we didn't have the funds, the city had the option of assuming responsibility for the maintenance facilities. It was an option. They weren't bound to it, they were in it, it's just an option. But it expired, but it used to be there. So, at one time, at least they thought about what would happen on it. So, I put that whole agreement in front of you too, so you can take a look at that and think about that for next week as well.
You said it does own the land, correct?
The city owns the land, and we own everything else above the land. Okay. So, as I went through this and with a lot of my staff, a real close thing, what if we have a shutdown? What does that mean? Is it a complete shutdown? What does that mean? A complete shutdown could mean a lot of things, too. It could be, we just shut the door and nothing happens except stuff that goes on in there while we're waiting for next year. It could go all the way up to a few programs running, it could be anything, and that's what I want to get a discussion going here tonight about. Would we stay open for some activities, which is part of that, aquatic, non-aquatic, and then what about Clover Valley? What would we do there? Some of the things that are very minimum that I think we need to address as we do the plan, and first off, if we don't pass the levy, when do we shut down? Do we do it immediately? Do we wait until Thanksgiving? Do I make it all the way through November and then head to December 1st? But I don't think we -- this is my opinion at the moment, I don't think we go past December 1st. But, and then when would we reopen? If we pass it in a year, when would we reopen? Immediately, December, or January? I have thoughts on that when we come to it, but in the discussion. Because one of the things we have to have when we open, we have to have some cash on hand to be able to pay salaries and other things right there while we're waiting on the levy to grow. Because it'll be the same thing, we'll start getting it if we pass it, we'll start in February getting the money for January, and it'll be a little bit, it'll be like every winter that we go through. And so, and then what does that mean? I put in here a number of 70,000, 80,000 because that's just the average number we have, but what if we don't open up full speed? What if we open up with reduced operating hours? And there are other things in there, and there are a lot of things to discuss here on how we want to do it, and a lot of it may be based on the reality at the time. We may have a plan now and then finances are either better or worse, and we have to adjust to that. As far as staffing goes, I'll have to rehire almost every big staff at that point. And that requires training, which is a cost, it'll require without a minimum, a position and some things, but pretty much training. Have to account for the beginning of 2019, whenever the minimum wage goes to $12 an hour. In 2018, all hourly wage people can accrue sickly, that's accrued at the rate of one hour for every 40 hours of work. So, and they might reach 40 hours of work for three months, but at that point, they get it. Now, just so, as a reminder, this isn't money that's owed to them if they need, it's only to be used if they require a sick day. I will, as I have in our -- I will lose the -- I will lose the Aquatics Director most likely, and then potentially the Client Services Director. Though during the shutdown, depending on how we do it, those positions can be covered to a large extent. So, while that's not good, there's -- I'm working plans to cover that. So, then I looked at revenue, and then, as far as revenue goes, will we have enough to run through December 18 for a January of 19 opening? Well, you can see, there, by this one starting point, there is some money to get going, but we'll get levy money, so you put a basis on here, when you look on the spreadsheet, the basis for the general property taxes right there, that's based on what we get, a big drop in November that what we would likely get in December, which would be what we'd get in January. So, it's based on a projected remaining levy number we're gonna get, that it's in the November. But we realize that in November, we'll get money in December, and then we'll get December's money in January. We get them the months they come in, as you guys recall, but until we get a Treasurers Report, we don't put anything into the -- we don't enter it into QuickBooks because in the past, there was a duplicate entry of a couple hundred grand, really messed it up, so that's just our policy right now. But the money is there, so we just don't recognize it until then. And then, at the rate right now, going up to the rate that I'm depositing money into the reserve, that we have about 70, almost $74,000 in the reserve to add to that, so roughly $320,000. That doesn't include any expenses that would occur during that time, when we get down to the expense side, but anyway, it's close estimate to what I think the starting number is to get us through a year, and that's the basis for those numbers there, if you're Depending on which programs we run or not, we could get that money there. In this spreadsheet here, I have the high school and the INWAC running on their projected revenue, only because I don't have to have lifeguards there except for, I can turn the pool temperature down to about 77, which will save us a lot of money on the boiler, and they can run, and I don't have to have lifeguards unless they have a heat, which we're, I've got that factored into here as well. Probably, and you see on the spreadsheet, the approximate amounts that we would get. Then, are there other sources? And then this gets into a part of what I would see as the discussion tonight, you know, what do we do? How do we get external sources here? Would we go to city? Would we go to county? Would we go to local industry? Would we be able, would someone step up and want to start a Friends of the District type 501 nonprofit thing that would help do some campaign, capital campaigning for us to come up with money, depending on how we want to operate during that time? Another option that came to mind here, and these aren't all inclusive, these are some of the things that came to mind. To save money, get away from the credit card thing, which is the cost of using the machine, and then the credit card cost, would we go to a cash-only, check-only business until we reopen and do that? It'll save us some money in there. On the expenses side, you know, there's the staff, right now would be my position, maintenance position, in a three-quarter time for the Finance Director, and it includes payroll, any benefits, which you can see, how we put, there's some of those in there, minor purchases. I could read all this to you, but you've probably read it already. Those are the things that I think where we're gonna have costs, at a minimum. There may be other areas, but these are the places in a minimum. And then, in the shut, what would be done during the shutdown? As we've sat around and looked at it, if we shut down completely, there's still a lot of work that can be done in there that'll take, that we could use the whole time in there to do it. I don't know when the last time it was done, but there's no inventory that's current in any way, so that would take a heck of a lot of time. The maintenance, the comprehensive maintenance plan stuff would still, but that stuff that would be applicable during this time would still need to be done. Then paying bills and doing things like that would have to be done. I don't know when the last, we've seen the cover resolutions and policies and procedures as we, as we've come up with a problem, but if we were in a shutdown, that would be a time we could go back through every single one of them and have, almost start with a more current set of resolutions, policies, and procedures that would more accurately reflect the way business is done in there. So, a review of all archived records in there. We have a lot of stuff, but I don't think we have to keep. I know some things we have to, but a lot of things we could, we could shred and get rid of and minimize the amount of storage, that space that's taken up by things that we don't have to keep and make more room for the other things. And there are a lot more things in there, but those are kind of the starting points that I wanted to get the discussion going tonight. So, with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over and look in the discussion.
I'd like to, you know, apparently you go from, if the levy fails, we're automatically shutting down. I don't, can we not use the shutdown? Why don't we modify the operations is what I would prefer to look at? Did you guys look at that?
To an extent, yes, but like I told you when we talked, there are like 17,000 ways from Sunday I could go. I just, I need to have more, more narrow guidance on which way you can want me to look at, because I can bring in spreadsheet after spreadsheet of stuff that would, that wouldn't really, we have a lot of spreadsheets to look at and go through. I don't, I don't know, it depends. I don't, do I think we have to completely shut down? It depends on what we want to do and how much money we have. It's really, or what sort of modified operation we can do, but it depends on what can we bring in enough revenue to cover the cost out of.
Yes, and that's, that's what I sort of thought you were going to come up with and show us a, you know, I know somewhere there's a sweet spot, maybe, maybe not, maybe without levy money, I assume without revenue from somewhere else or capital from somewhere else, and it doesn't have to be a levy, it could be fundraising, we can't afford all the maintenance, but I think we could probably run, I think, but it's like, I'm not positive because I don't see the numbers. But I think if we did a modification of programs and costs, somewhere there's a nice sweet spot where we're gonna have to raise prices and modify program hours, and maybe we can make it through, and maybe what we ought to do is presume we will never pass another levy.
Well, then when we reach a point where if we don't get external, of some sort, then eventually we will shut down.
But that's the fetus, it's like, we need to find, no, it's not realist, it's like there's other money to be found, and you just haven't been looking. There are grants to be had and fundraising that could be done, and we have not done any of that. Commissioner Hofmeyer.
You know, as far as receiving grants or other money, I think that, I think if the local people aren't going to pay for a pool to be here in Oak Harbor, then I think nobody is. I've looked over this budget so many times, and again, I'm not the executive director, we'd have an executive director to do that. Looking at the budget, just the insurance and the gas and the electricity and the water bill, there's no way. You could not raise that many funds yearly. You're not gonna raise a quarter to half million dollars from the businesses in this town every single year. I hate to say it, but if the levy does not pass in November, in my opinion, everything that the district has would unfortunately have to close on November 8th, Clover Valley included, you know, because you have a property there and it's almost the same as a state park. If there's a government shutdown, there's no park rangers. So, they could leave the gates to the park open, but they don't, because there's risk with that. And if we were a district that was so strapped for funds that we had no money and possibly had no executive director, I don't even think you could leave the gates open there because you wouldn't be able to defend yourself if there were a legal issue to arise. I think, if we do have to shut down, when we look at the fact that we need a quarter to nine dollar roof, I don't, I don't see how we're gonna sit there and do inventory and go through archived records and stuff either. I think that regardless of what we sit here and say we want tonight, from November 8th, if the levy does not pass, there will be extremely drastic money in cuts, and I don't know that the pool will ever reopen, I hope it does.
Madam Chair.
You know, the fact that the city can step in and take over is, it might be an option that we come to, I'm glad to see that is on, has been on paper at some point.
You're done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification that I don't believe that the election will be certified until November 20 something or rather, I don't remember what the date is, but just in terms of if we're throwing out dates, we actually, while we'll know the informal results, they won't actually be recorded with the county until...
Agreed, but if we miss by 17% again, there's no need to wait.
I think, I think the thing here, so first of all, I need time to look at this. I would echo the statement that it isn't exactly what I was expecting, but I have no reason to say why I was expecting something different, so, in all fairness. I think part of what I am hoping that we try to do is become solution-oriented, the problems are obvious, and so, part of it is, is how do we present solutions and look at more than one of them, because I think you and I are saying the same thing, and part of it is, I was hoping that we were a little bit further along. I don't mean it as a criticism, I just mean it as a, man, there's a lot of work to do here. And so, I want us to try to be solution-oriented, to figure out what do we think will work? Because I think, I think that there is also potentially a compelling story for the taxpayers to understand what that impact is. And I was, I was hopeful that we would have had some of this information sooner. Again, I'm not saying it take a jab, it's just, I think that, that there is a compelling story. Gee, did you realize, and I'm not gonna throw out numbers, because I don't know them, right? I think that's the thing about being, about us trying to be responsible with information and data. It's been said previously in the paper that if, if the levy didn't pass, the pool wouldn't close. I think that the people who wanted, but it was said, and it was quoted, and it was printed in the paper, and I didn't know where that information came from, meaning what factual basis it resided on, and I've never seen it, but, you know, I think it's, it was a mistake to have said that without basis, because if it had basis, we would see it right here, and we're not seeing that. So, again, I, I think I'm just trying to take it all in right now. I know we have a lot of work to do, I don't feel like I can make a decision this evening. I feel like I need to look at what we have in front of us and formulate questions and try to look at what are the potential solutions.
All right. So, that's what I thought we were coming here tonight, was to basically, we were supposed to go over this stuff, this was posted last Friday, we were supposed to go over this and put down our questions, you can pick it up at the stage, but you could also go on the website and look at it. And I have done that, and I am prepared to ask questions, and that's what I thought we were going to do, we're gonna come here and ask questions page by page is the way I had planned to do it, and try, and clarify things, but if we come here unprepared, then...
I wasn't aware, because I was actually told yesterday that we would be receiving it later in the day on Monday, so...
I propose we go page by page through this and have a discussion.
Yeah, we're all here, absolutely.
That's what this thing's about, not to say, well, throw up our arms, we can't do anything, blah, blah, blah.
And no one said that.
Okay.
My comment was that I don't want to just, I think there's a, there's a middle that we should try before we just say, shut it all down.
I agree, I think we have to clarify this before we can come to the middle.
Okay. I just, I looked at this, this was not available till yesterday for me, and I looked at it and was surprised that there wasn't a middle, there was just...
Wasn't it on the primary?
No, we got it yesterday.
It was yesterday, this one, huh?
Yeah, when you got it, I was wondering.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so to clarify, we've, we've had it for 24, for a little over 24 hours. Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so if that's how you would like to do it, that's fine with me, is to go over this page by page.
I would, each section. I'm gonna start with the other section, which one, you can decide which one you want to start from.
Well, we already went over this one. Did you want to talk about, talk about this by question?
The PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint.
She's referring to the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I like your PowerPoint.
Okay.
First of all, I disagree with the Commissioner to my right that Clover Valley Park would have to close down. I think it probably should have little effect on it, I think that probably Clover Power Park doesn't draw a lot of money.
Doesn't draw any money.
Yeah, so they, I think they could, they could use, maybe a little more volunteers on the users' parts, for example, rather than us providing doggy bags, you guys bring your own little plastic doggy bags, like most people around my neighborhood do, let use their old, you know, shopping bags and so on, of course, when they walk their dogs.
I hate to borrow that. It does accrue a little bit, yeah, it covers, you gotta think of water.
I know, I was gonna get to that.
And you think trash, and then you also, you also have to put it in the...
I haven't gotten to that yet, I was gonna discuss all that.
Well, you know, you gotta take, you know, take care of the place.
Okay, so I think, again, so volunteer work for the landscaping maybe, I think the porta potty, the money that probably, if we, if levy doesn't pass, all those users out there are not gonna be paying the levy fee, so that's money they could maybe donate towards their own porta potty. And, so basically, and I would think we could probably turn off the water, that's what I'm thinking I was gonna get to. Certainly during the winter, we probably don't need the water.
No, we need water.
The dog people can, can bring water, they can bring five, get a five gallon, there's solutions to that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not saying it, you know, it's easy, it's good, but it would take a little work on your, on your park, but you can keep it open, I don't think it needs to close, so...
The only thing I got a question about that is insurance on that, because it is...
We have insurance, we're paying for insurance, so we're already paying for insurance which covers it.
If we're closed down, we're not gonna keep paying $96,000 for insurance.
Yes, that's already in the, we haven't gotten to that, that's why we're going line by line. It's, if you went through there, the insurance is part of the cost.
$55,000, not $96,000.
So, anyway, so, it's not $96,000. It was 60-something thousand dollars.
Yeah, 65.
He hasn't listed there. Okay, so anyway, so insurance is covered, so I don't think the dog park has to cover it. Okay, the next one down, Northwoodby Park and Recreation District, when do we shut down?
No, wait, 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 we're gonna do a page by page, so...
Well, yeah, mine's just...
No, 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 the first page, so, do the other commissioners have comments on this first page and responses to what Commissioner Ford said?
You know, I'm not trying to dosage it anybody, I think what I said was clearly worded as just an opinion of mine, and I don't want anything said tonight by any one of us to be construed as fact. My opinion is, is that whether it can stay open or whether it would have to close, it's not, it's not some, something that there's a conclusion on, we would have to talk with the insurance company and see, and if we're having to do a full shutdown, time will tell. But it might not be as simple as saying we can keep it open unfortunately.
Even if you shut the gates, you're not gonna keep people out of there.
It's gonna be a liability, because you could always put a gate up there like that little line right there.
We already had a gate, we're not gonna be able to afford to put up a bigger gate and bigger fence.
Well, you can put in the line that we already have in there, there's cement blocks over there, the barriers, you can put in there.
That's not gonna keep you from walking over.
I get that right there, but you got the liability, so if we don't have insurance over there and somebody does walk in there...
We do have insurance over there. We have the same insurance over there now that we have. You can check on that and clarify that, but I just don't think that that's gonna be a problem.
Looking at this budget, another thing that's not in here, what if every, we're an exempt employer, and this is on this, we are an exempt employer and we don't pay unemployment benefits.
That's, wait, 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 but that's not, that's not on this page.
That's not this page, we're going page by page, and eventually, we'll eventually get to that because it is...
But to say that we're gonna have, to say that we have insurance, like we're already living in the future, to say that we have something when we don't even know if we're gonna have a penny, we don't know what we're gonna have, that's why we're here tonight.
That's why we're going page by page, because there is some money that we're supposed to have, and we're supposed to determine how much we can afford to spend, so that's why we're going page by page, rather than just, again, everybody's just throwing up their arms and nobody's trying to make a discussion here. If you've read this...
Calm down, just please, calm.
Sorry.
And I guess, we can all read it and look at it differently, I guess, but...
That's why we're gonna go through this page by page and discuss it. That's what the director, I assume that's what the director wanted us to do.
I don't know how we're gonna move forward if we can't even admit that there's a possibility that Clover Valley...
It's a possibility, if, if the director, if the director says that insurance won't cover it, then you're right. But let's say the director says it is covered, if we cut off the water, if they do most of the volunteer work, it can stay open. It's not gonna be as nice as it is, I mean, but it's still functional.
We already did the most of the...
You can still bring your water for your dogs.
And also the...
The only thing is, is the water and the trash is the only thing that we don't do in that place.
Matt will still be working, and I would assume that we can still, he picks up the trash now, is that correct, out there?
That's all they do is the trash.
Exactly, that's all, that's all, that's what I'm saying, that's all that's gonna be done. You guys will pick up the dog, the dog dirt.
We already did that.
Deposited in the trash.
We already did that.
Yeah, I agree.
Everything but the water and the trash is taken care of.
And the lawn mowing, if you want, if you want something lawn mowed, you want the dog area mowed, you'll have to do that yourself.
We already do that. It is self-sufficient.
Okay, Commissioner Ford?
It's not gonna have to close it.
The Director of Maintenance has something to add.
I got one, one to throw out there. Now, if we're going to this, reduce everything, we are gonna reduce our trash, all right? Now at Clover Valley and the ball fields, we will not be taking trash anymore.
You're gonna be working full-time.
Well, you, all right, we're cutting back on the trash, and we're, and we're cutting it down to a smaller container.
We need to discuss that, because that's a minor, minor cost, I would assume.
You said, take that to the dump and all that, so that's gonna cost money.
The taking it to the dump is a minor cost, once a week.
What's the cost for Clover Valley right now? Minus, minus the improvement stuff, what does it cost for the water and the bags or maintenance?
The water is about, I think the water is around, just shy of $100 a month, like $98 a month on average, so it's about a little over $1,000 a year, 1,200, almost 1,200 a year that comes out of water.
So, it seems to me what we could do is we could take up a collection from the people that actually use it, and that was what I thought when we start, first started talking about this, is that we take up a collection from the people who actually use it and specify that that money is to be used for Clover Valley only, and we keep it, you know, and if we don't get enough money for water, we turn the water off and the other stuff, but it's like, if we get enough money from the people that use it, and we do not use that money for anything else but Clover Valley upkeep and stuff, that to me is, is an answer to it.
Right. How much is, how much does it cost to take the trash in? Would we take it once a week?
We can drag it back and put it in our bin, but that, where this starting point is, is us going down to a small trash can.
How much is our trash cost per week, per, everything, because it goes into our bin, so...
You mean the current trash?
So, I can't figure out how much.
I have, I don't, I have to get an itemized thing because it comes as part of our water bill.
And so, I mean, we're still gonna have trash, so we're still gonna have to pay some trash.
Yes.
So, I don't think we're gonna be saving that much more from the little bit of trash that we're gonna be adding from...
Well, actually, actually, Arrow coming down from the big container we have to a 20 gallon or something similar size can, which is what this is based on, this is going down to like a minimum, and then the discussion goes from there, it would be, it saves us several hundred dollars a month.
Wow.
Yes.
And are, are you have a solution to the dog park?
Just a trash line item on there, there's no...
I'll talk to you about it later.
I'll guarantee you there's gonna be trash out there anyway.
Well, probably, and we'll have to deal with it.
Well, of course there is, I mean, that's the nature of the...
Well, of course there is, I mean, that's the nature of the-
You're not gonna-
Uh, I, I, and I don't disagree with you there, we can, we can do it if we're gonna, if we go to the accident.
So let's try and do the best we can with the situation we've got, and this, I'm saying, this is, we're not, we're not closing down the park, I mean, we're just saying if we don't get the levy paid, the, we could, the park should be able to function. With some, it, with some, maybe they have to contribute to the trash too then, I don't know, I mean, I, I would say, how much, how much trash do we take out of there a week?
Uh, I'm estimating, well, actually, I'm, I'm bringing about eight to ten bags, and we're talking the thirty-three gallon, or the, the fifty-five gallon bag.
Really, that much trash?
Yes.
People come in there and dump their household trash over there, and they dump their, dump their trash in there, it's not for the dog park.
If we get rid of that dumpster out there.
There's, there's a dumpster.
It's just trash, it's, yeah, it's just trash.
It's just two fifty-five-
Wherever they do, they just dump it in the field, or a big bag?
They, right beside it, or outside it, or?
Let's get rid of the trash cans and-
That's not gonna solve the problem, that is not gonna solve the problem, because they're just gonna throw it off to the side and then-
Well, they're gonna do this anyway, so how are we gonna correct that, shut, just, if you think, I mean, they shut, they throw stuff alongside my road, you know, Taylor Road there when they wanna dump the things, so that, it's not going to, that's, you, we all know that they're still gonna dump, so we're still gonna have trash.
If, if they can't drive in, they're not gonna dump the whole truck load in, they're like they continue to do. If you go to that, if you go to some barrier system and it's done, and we decide that that's what it is.
Okay, so we put up lots, and, and the dog people will have to walk in.
That's a possibility.
To your point, Commissioner, yeah, if someone wants to, they can get trash in there.
We're trying to find something that would work, if we put the blocks up there, so people can't drive in there, if people could, and, and the dog people could still park, maybe we could put them back a little bit so they could still park, and take their dogs in there, that would allow them to still take their dogs in there.
So, so could the executive director find out if the county is okay with people parking alongside of the busiest road on Wiby Island that's not the way it's designed?
What if we put the-
It doesn't say no parking.
If we put the blocks back a little bit, they could provide them a little bit of parking button.
I, I don't, I don't think we need to get to that point where we're gonna shut down everything, we really only need to shut down the area to where it's right at the tree line where the, the dog park stops, because you got a lot of people dumping trash, have to go all the way to the baseball fields to do that, because it's in a more secluded area, if it's more right in view of everybody else, we're not gonna do that.
So they're not gonna dump it right on the road area, so if we move the blocks back a little bit and leave you guys a, a fifty-foot area or whatever, to pull your cars in and park in there, you're off the road, and you can park there, and then you can, and, and then you can walk your dogs in.
I, I think we can just bury it off right at the porta potty, where the porta potty is right now, I think we would be fine with that right there.
Oh, really?
Because most of the trash is gonna be either dumped on the side, right where the road is, where you come in, up to the side where there's like a, a little trail over there, they're gonna dump it either there, or they're gonna go all the way to the baseball field and dump it.
Right.
I mean, they'll dump it anywhere anyways, I just found a air conditioner unit, dumped in the parking space over there, so.
I would think they probably wouldn't dump it right on the road, so that's why I'm saying if we grease that scenario back a little bit for the parking area, put the blocks in there, they wouldn't be able to drive in there, and you guys would still be able to park and take your dogs in.
We could work that, we could come up with a solution to that, but something that is far from set right now, we can work with that right there.
Can we, we move on, this is something, we're in the weeds now, I think, but it's-
All right, I know, but we, we've kind of settled that it is possible to keep that open.
Okay, maybe what we need to do is say, so what does, what does a shutdown mean? You know, is it complete, which, I, I think, to me, one of you, I hear shutdown, I, that to me means a complete shutdown, close the pool, so, um, I would rather talk about a modified hours option to you, does that, but is that something that you are-
We're gonna go page by page, I was gonna discuss that in part of the profit and loss.
Okay.
I think we should go over this before we go over that, because this is raising more questions than the director.
Okay, let's move to profit and loss.
Um, maybe the chair should determine that, since she's running the meeting.
Yeah, we started with this one, let's continue with this one, as far as what we're gonna talk about, so, um.
Go page two, right?
Yeah, I, I, anyway. Page two.
Shutdown.
So, when, when do we shut down? Or when do we go to modified hours? Whether it's like a complete shutdown or, or some modification, and, um, I would say probably early November, as soon as the results of the levy are felt, and we know that either, if, if we know that the levies failed and we're not gonna have that money, we probably should be saving as much money as we can and go into whatever, modified hours.
The pools close on Thanksgiving anyway, so we could do it on Thanksgiving, that Thanksgiving week that we're closed.
Well, it's only closed for three days. That's, it's just, when do we, when, when do we go to either, if we have to go to the pool, one, or do we go to modify, I, I think we go, we go as soon as we can.
Does somebody want to make a motion on?
I make a motion, we, if the levy fails, we close immediately as soon as we know the, the results of levy.
Do we close or modify hours?
Modify hours, or, yes, we're gonna discuss the modified schedule.
Okay, and do you second that?
Can I hear it again, was it close or modify hours?
Yeah, can we, can we restate the motion, because you technically can't change his motion, I, I know we were trying to be helpful, but you technically can't do that.
When should we shut down, I propose, probably as soon as the levy, as we know the levy has failed, oh, and again, shutdown, when should we shut down or modify schedule, so.
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
That sounded like a question.
Okay, I'm just changing the wording that he had on his thing, it says, it said, when do we, should we shut down, so I say, when do we shut down, or, or modify schedule.
Okay, you move that, sorry, I, I'm, I wanna get this down the right way.
Yeah, or modify schedule.
You move that.
I move.
Please just, please re-
I move that-
We go to shutdown or modified schedule on-
He needs to make the motion.
That's what, I'm, I'm helping him.
I, I know that, I know that, but everyone's helping, and it's-
I move, we, we, uh, shut down or modify when I order, go on a modified schedule as soon as the levy, as we know the levy has failed. Any seconds? No seconds.
Are you clear, are you clear on the words?
Yeah, what I have is, I move, we go to shut down or modify the schedule as soon as we know the levy has failed.
Do, do we think that, I, I'm just trying to think, I have to, the last three or four words of that sentence is clear enough, or it leaves us in another limbo spot?
Well, either second or you don't, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be curt with you, it's just-
Let somebody else word it better than me, I can't, obviously can't word it, if anybody's satisfied.
I think that sounds fine, because if, if there's like a twenty percent, or a fourteen percent, or a seven percent, you know, if it's not a couple of votes hanging that might come from absentee ballots, we'll know.
I said, as soon as we know the levy has failed.
He's just-
If it's seventeen percent, we can know it's probably the levy has failed, if it's a few, few votes, we don't know it's levy has failed until it's been-
Certified.
Certified.
So, could we, it, it, I, I need to second that, I guess, so we can amend it, but I wonder if we could include that, if the difference is larger than the outstanding vote.
So are you seconding it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, so it's been moved and seconded, that we go to a shutdown or modified schedule as soon as the, as soon as we know the levy has failed. Discussion, Commissioner Hofmeyer.
I wonder if we should include just a little more clarity in there, you know, uh, just, just the last three, four words there left me with a little bit of questioning, you know, uh, I, I don't know if somebody has better words, if they would like to-
So go ahead, and you-
What would you recommend?
You know, I, I guess that once, one, one, once the outcome is clear, you know, being that the, the, the vote difference is larger than the votes that are outstanding, I guess.
You want to be specific, you better be specific.
When does actual, everything get counted and it's supposed to be posted?
It's, it's certified like the twenty, twenty-eighth.
Votes are counted the night of the settlement, like?
Yeah, we'll, we'll know, like, the next morning, it'll be on the website.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potentially we'll know, not potentially, okay.
You wanna put a percentage down there, what if it's, so if, if it fails by more than five percent, we, we move to shut down and go on a modified schedule immediately. If it's less than five percent, we will wait until certification.
Or that, the outstanding votes to be counted, well, you know, because then they still have absentee ballots coming in that are still valid.
At a certain point, it's just a mathematical factor.
Exactly.
Yeah, but-
I'd say five percent would be good.
One, two percent, three percent, do you wanna put a percentage in there?
I'd say five percent, that should be good.
Yeah, I'm kind of at war with this relation to the outstanding vote, you know, I mean, if it's losing by eight hundred votes and there's four hundred votes up to count.
So, so give us a proposal, what, what number do you want to use?
I, I don't know that we necessarily need a number, I think that whenever, whenever the difference is larger than the outstanding votes, I think at that point.
So as soon as we know the levy has failed, I E.
Yes, the-
What's the wording you were gonna use?
That, that the vote difference still is larger than the votes that are outstanding.
The vote, okay. Differential.
Do they know that right away, or, they seem like they kept saying, well, we have, we don't know about the mail-in vote, because I remember looking it up.
And that is the problem, because it's like, people can still, it just has to be postmarked by election day, they can still be mailing in, um, but.
Election day's on the seventh, right?
I mean, we gotta rely on the director to make some sort of rational decision, he's gonna be the one to do that.
Can you talk about when the decision is made?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, I mean, if you see it's only, you know, it still has a chance to, to pass, you're not going to shut down the pool, you're going to say, oh, that doesn't hold, because it may still pass under, by the time of certification.
I, I would, I would feel, I would feel very comfortable if we're within whatever the commission decides as a percentage of close to it, that we have, if we have to wait until it's certified to make the decision, and that's okay, but if we're outside of that percentage, and we know we can't get there from here, then the decision is auto-made. But I think you guys need to make that decision on what the, how close you have to be to determine, well, we need to wait until it's certified.
Maybe we should just change it to, as soon as we are convinced the levy has failed, because it's just a field for the numbers.
How about as soon as the director is convinced?
As soon as the director is convinced the levy has failed.
There we go, leave it up there.
Okay, is that how you would like to modify it?
Yes.
Is there a second on the modification? Okay, as soon as the director is convinced. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, that we go to a shutdown or modified schedule as soon as the director is convinced the levy has failed. All those in favor signify by saying.
We haven't had any discussion, we've, we've only had discussion about, I'm sorry, we've only had discussion about the motion itself, we haven't, haven't actually had any discussion about the content, I'm sorry, it's like, oh, done, done, but we haven't had any discussion.
You are correct.
Mm-hmm.
Speak.
Well, usually we go in order, if you're calling on me first, that's fine.
Well, Commissioner Hofmeyer spoke, Commissioner Ford made the thing, do you guys have anything else to say, sorry, you are correct, I'm, I'm sorry, we're just going kind of all over the place. Okay, so Commissioner Shingleton.
We, yeah, we are, I agree, um, personally, I think we're putting the cart ahead of the horse by doing this, because I think we need to invest our time in real solutions, as opposed to just, when do we enact this thing that we don't know what it is yet, so personally, I think it's, I think it's out of order, and, and I'm not saying that in a Roger, or Roberts rules parliamentary procedure, sorry, I'm flustered now, but way, but in a, I think we should be looking at, like, I think we should be, so in the Stephen Covey sense, looking at the big rocks right now, and, and I feel like we're focusing on smaller things, I think we need to focus on the big things, that is all I have to say about this motion. Thanks.
Mr. Frosch?
All I guess here is, we're going by order on this, so this is the first thing on order, so now we're gonna go to the next one, and we're gonna address the big rocks like you, you were talking about, so this is just one of the many things we gotta discuss, that it just happened to be first on the line, so, let's continue, let's take a vote.
Okay, and I absolutely don't have a problem with when we discuss this, because it's like, it is something that needed to be decided, so, it's been moved and seconded, that we go to a shutdown on a modified schedule as soon as the director is convinced the levy has failed, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Post?
Nay.
And Chair votes aye, vote four to one, so it passes.
And you need to?
And, yes, by, by vote, Commissioner Frosch?
Aye.
Commissioner Shingleton?
Nay.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay. Okay, the next question is, when would we reopen if we pass the levy in November 2018? And I, I actually don't even wanna, um, uh, because that's assuming that the levy fails this November, that we do close, that, and that we then put a levy on the ballot next November, and I think those are questions that maybe we should talk about later, after we talk about what we're gonna do this November, does-
I think that should be for the next commissioners, because it's gonna involve them, not us.
Yeah, okay, so let's go to the next page. Will we have enough to run through December 18 for January 19 reopening?
Can't make a decision on that, I don't think, until we've gone through this.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. Is there anything on this page that, um, is something that we need, is like a big picture thing?
Once again, it's gonna be affected by what's gonna happen with the next board of commissioners, so I think we could pass on this.
Okay. Is there anything on this page that you want us to address tonight specifically?
Was that the N S P revenue?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I think we, I think we did it so far in the discussion.
Okay. All right. And this one is that, um, this is all in the, the other pages, the shutdown considerations, which we're gonna talk about in detail. And then the shutdown considerations, okay. So, in my opinion, we're ready to move to the profit and loss budget, does anyone else, is there something that you think we need to talk about that was on these pages specifically?
The only thing I have a question on is, has to do with the MWR, how are they going to get their full time if the pool closes, are they gonna have to go to Anacortes or another pool, or, because I know the only pool that they have available is the one on base, which is only designed for survival training, so is that gonna affect MWR, or is that, MWR gonna have full access to that?
I used to swim out there when they, before they shut it down, everybody may just come down here, they, they did their PRT training out there, in the training tank, it's, it is, it is, it does have lanes available for doing the PRT training.
But is, MWR want to-
That would be for MWR to decide whether they want to go there or pay Anacortes. That's not...
Well, they've already paid.
But that's the only thing we can discuss is if they want to pay us... But we're going to get to that. If they want to pay us and we can make it so it was budget neutral plus 10%, then yeah, then we could probably still... Because I'm talking about... Again, we're talking about... We're going to talk about a modified schedule and which programs we want to keep open and which we don't.
I just didn't see that on there. So I just wanted to bring it to you.
You're correct. It's not, and which is why we're going to talk about it.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, yeah. I agree. I think that's a possibility. I think it would, if they're willing to pay for it.
Okay. So first page. Director, on the profit or profit-loss budget. Did you want to bring anything to our attention on the first page?
Well, I think I covered that first one. This is an estimated amount of money based on... That doesn't mean the other revenues that come in during that time may not be residual in there. But this is the estimate that we should... We're going to get on taxes next month. I've gone back and looked over four years and did a percentage of what happens each month and then just applied it to it to come up with a number. It seems close. And the anticipated reserves are, if I keep dumping the 2,000 in... Of course, if the levy didn't pass, I'm not going to dump 2,000 into it in December or in November, December. But so that's where we would be on the reserve at that point. So that would be an estimate of what our cash on hand might look like at that point.
Okay. Commissioner Ford?
Yeah. So we're going to discuss page 1.
Yes.
So, for example, we talked about a modified schedule, swim lessons. This has generally been a plus for us. Why can't we continue doing swim lessons? And, you know, I agree, we have to probably warm up the pool. We'd have to take that into consideration as part of the cost temporarily during that time. But if we're going to... Is the pool going to be 77 degrees when the high school and the NWA are swimming?
Yes.
So we would have to probably increase the temperature to a higher temperature for swim lessons. So we'd have to take that, again, how much that extra cost would be to bring it up for the week or two that we have swim lessons and shut it back down. But I still think that could be done on a profitable... A plus. In order to... We could pay for the people who are the trainers and the lifeguard and the CSS or whatever we have to have. And I'm going to discuss that further because I think CSS could... I mean, possibly YouTube could be checking people in and out occasionally. So how about swim lessons? Is that not possible?
The largest single utility is the boiler.
Yeah.
It's about $68,000 a year.
Right. So what would it cost? So maybe 2,000 for two weeks?
I don't know. It's never been done before.
Okay.
You could start off if that's...
To go up 4 degrees or 5 degrees?
We could potentially start off with something like that.
Can we look into that?
I won't know the number until we do it. I can't estimate that. I can't estimate electricity.
Okay.
I don't know how this is going to be.
I didn't know if math had some idea or input or...
Well, I just know if you fluctuate an equipment like that at this age, you're going to have issues with it if you're not careful. And being... I've noticed that the higher the fluctuation, about your 5 degrees, 5 to 6 degrees, it is going to probably take more power to do that than to gradually do it.
Well, I would say we gradually do it. Over, you know, I'm not saying we do it overnight. I would say we do it over a week and gradually increase it. Because you can't increase... I don't think you can increase the water in the pool overnight, 2 or 3 degrees.
It takes 2 days to heat the water a degree.
Okay, there we go. So if we're going to... That's an answer. So it's 2 days per degree. So now we're talking about 3 or 4 degrees. What's the water have to be at, do you think, to be...
For a swim school?
Yeah.
One right about... That probably has to have at 81 degrees.
Okay, 81 degrees. 77 to 81 is 4 degrees. 4 times 2 is 8 days. We'd have to turn it on 8 days ahead of time.
If that's the course that we want to go.
Yeah, no. But we're thinking... But you were asking, "Is there ways we can make money?" If we can make money off of this, then why wouldn't we do it? I mean, we're going to...
I'm bringing you a hard reality. Boiler and electricity and all those costs in there are something that's... It'll be very hard for us to estimate. So it's hard for me to say.
Well, but we know what the boiler costs are per year. So we can break it down somewhat. We can say it's probably not going to be more than $1,000 a week or a little.
No, it's more like $1,000 a degree because you have the estimate of the gas that runs through the flame. You have the electricity to run the brain to make it turn on and off. So there's...
I don't have any more discussions. I don't think there's much...
Well, think of it this way. You run a piece of equipment at a certain pace. Now, let's go with the car. You drive a car at 45 miles per hour on kind of a road right there. When you increase to 55, that's going to take more gas to go up to 55 and then go back down to 45, then go back to 55. You're going to cause more money.
Try and calculate that in.
You can't do that.
We can possibly hit that 100%, but I think we can probably come within a 10% estimate of being right.
I don't think we can.
Okay, then just forget it. Let's not do... I say we close the pool completely and have no programs.
Okay.
Because you can't figure it for any of the programs. You can't figure it for this one. You can't figure it for NWA. You can't figure it for the high school. You can't figure it for any of the others.
That's okay. I'm good. Commissioner Hofmeyer, did you have anything on the first page?
I do. When you look at the anticipated reserves, with no money available, that's what we would have. What I see looking at this is roughly the patron water, the gas, the power, and the insurance. $155,000 is roughly what I'm seeing here. We need a maintenance... We need the maintenance kind of staying, obviously. There's going to be maintenance regardless of whether the place is open or not. And if we're ever going to reopen again, we need the executive group to stay. That alone is over a quarter of a million dollars. And when there's only $73,000 in anticipated reserves, I'm looking for ways that we could stay open more than bare bones. Yes?
If I can help you with this, please. The general profit taxes is what I estimate we will get in the levy money in the November, December, January timeframe as residuals for... Or as the accumulation for each prior month of those 3 months that I made. The reserve is what I think would be there. So I'm adding those 2 numbers together to come up with this right here. And they're independent of each other. And then maybe, you know, like other... Until we reach the point, if we reach this point and we have to modify hours or whatever, this doesn't include any of that revenue, which would come down here and, you know, passes, pumps, lessons and things like that. It doesn't include any of that money. This is it. If we didn't have anything else, this is the money we would have to start from. Or I believe that we would have from us to start.
So, yeah. Even though you said what you said out of frustration, Commissioner Ford, I think that that is a hard reality that closing the entire facility for over a year may be what happens here if the levy does not pass, which hopefully it will. I mean, we're looking at this whole thing as a defeatist attitude, and I don't want to get off track too much. But the voters still have the chance. I'm warning everyone who's here, sitting here, are voters. We all have the chance to pass it. And they got 46% in the primary and maybe it will get... Maybe it will get 64% in the general. But I think it's high time that the voters see the hard reality as well, and it's not pretty.
I am opposed to the reserves being counted as available to pay anything. I think they need to stay in reserves for a true emergency. And we need to make do with what we are going to have. This is my thought on it on this page. Commissioner Shingleton?
I agree with that point. I think another thing that perhaps is... The fact is, is that, you know, we can look at things in a linear order the way they were presented to us. I personally would approach the discussion a different way, which is part of my frustration. However, I think one thing that's missing from this is that there are assumptions that might be clear to you and are clear when you look at it, but I think they need to be stated. So, for example, if I understand correctly, effectively based on what we have in front of us as a draft, right? Or as one option, it includes... It basically includes no programs as it is. It includes no programs other than the high school and the private swim team. Is that accurate? That's what it appears to be.
From programmatic side, yes.
Okay. And so that includes no, no open swim, no, no anything else. And I agree with you, Commissioner Ford. I think that's part of what's difficult about for me. And I'm not trying to... I'm not just trying to be difficult, but is it's how do we solution something that works? Because from my perspective, and I know I'm supposed to be talking about the first page and I'm kind of trying to, but from an approach perspective as well. Well, and some of... Yeah, you're right, it is. It is because that's where a lot of that revenue would be found. And in the copy we're looking at, there are zeros. I can honestly say, and I kind of have to get my head around the solutions that I'd like to see, and they might be the same or different from what the rest of you would. But one of them would really be, I would like to see what the impact would be if we had things like open swim. What would that mean from a pricing perspective? What if we had lap swim? What if we had those things? What would that impact be? Because I think that there's a difference. I realize that there's relative risk that if we said, "Sure, we're going to have it," and then the estimated number of people didn't show up. But I think that's where we kind of have to say, you know, here's what we think this would look like. Again, I'm reticent. I'll try to, you know, it's X dollars. I'm not going to use dollars because I don't know what those answers are. And those would be things that we would have to agree as a group, right? In terms of that pricing strategy. I think there's some ballpark stuff that would be, "What does that mean to us?" And I would really love to entertain what some of those solutions are. So, and I would probably either say reduced schedule or limited offerings. But again, that... So looking at what those might be, whether it be... And again, I completely understand. There are myriad possibilities here. But I think that they should include, especially... Well, I'm getting pages ahead of me, so I'll stop. I'll back that one up. But I think they should include access to the pool by the public in some form or fashion, at least on a trial basis. I think it has to include that because otherwise I don't think we will ever... Should we get down this road? And hopefully we won't. But should we get down here? I think if we close off access to the pool to the public completely, then I think we're done. I think we would have to be done. And I don't think they're going to come back to us.
Wait. Commissioner Frosch, do you have something on this first page?
I just say if the levy fails this time, the public has spoken and they don't want a pool in here. That's just the way I see it. They don't want to pay for a pool, so that's why they didn't invoke for it. But that could change. That could change in a year or so. But it depends on how many people want to see the pool back up.
Okay.
That's speculation on there.
We're talking about the first page.
Basically, that's... I mean, I didn't get to finish this whole thing. I don't think we necessarily have to... I think we could group things together. You see what I'm saying? If we grouped the swim lessons and the MWR PRT training times and so on and so forth and the other programs you want to do and say, "We open for a month and we close for a couple of months." Or we open for another month. There's ways to discuss this rather than just to say, "There's nothing that can be done." I think there is things that can be done. It takes a little... You've got to think ahead. You've got to be thinking, you know, how can we do this economically? And I think we can do this. There probably are ways to try to do this economically if we do a little thinking and say, "Well, okay, we won't be able to stay open all the time. But we can... Maybe we can open on a part-time basis periodically." And group everything together. Group the swim lessons together. During that same, you know, 2 weeks or 3 weeks we're going to be open. The MW PRT could schedule their times and rent the lanes. And maybe prices would have to go up a little bit to cover all that. And same, I don't know that we could... And again, lap swim and then I guess, and aerobics. But again, rates would have to go up, I guess, to cover that. So that's what I thought we were going to discuss. Not just say, "Well, we're just going to have to close down. Let's not think... You think about it."
But that's not the position that the staff's bringing you. I brought you a starting point from...
I know. But I mean, I never got any... When I brought this thing about swim lessons, "No, it can't be done." Well, think about it. If it can be grouped together with other things, maybe it can be done. Don't just tell me it can't be done. That's the answer I felt like I was getting from you two.
I was just trying to explain to you that how, you know, that it costs a lot of money to fluctuate.
Yes, sir. I understand that. And I said we had to figure that in.
Commissioner Ford? Calm down.
I completely agree.
So we have to figure that in and we have to try and figure a way we can do that where it works. We can't do it one, you know... We can't open a week, close a week, open up a week, close a week. But we can do it a month and close a month. That's... It takes... That's what we were sort of coming to you to let you go back and think about how to do that and how that could be accomplished. Not saying we're going to decide that tonight. We were just going to come give you some thoughts and say, "Think about it."
This is our target for our...
Yes, sir. I know, I know. But I felt like I was being cut right off at the knees. I didn't think I was getting, "You know, it just can't be done." So, okay, so now we're agreeing that maybe let's think about it. Thank you.
And I had forgotten that was on this page. But it's like, I also think those zeros in the revenue... If you have open swim and we have it during the summer in the afternoon, it's like that will be heavily attended, I would think. If you look at the schedule with a... With some imagination and don't presume that everything's set in stone. It's like, open later, move things around, you know?
Commissioner, I don't have anything set in stone here.
I'm just seeing a bunch of zeros and I didn't understand that.
It's a starting point for us to start a discussion. I don't... I'm looking for guidance from you guys so that I can go a direction that makes sense.
Okay. Seems like the discussion has come up with something that's a modified schedule.
Can we get one more thing on the first page?
So while we're on the first page here and while we look at swim lessons, you know, and we're looking at a budget, it's very hard to put numbers on a lot of things, especially when we don't know what we want to do. And, you know, I think the question here for the taxpayer is, you know, can you put a price on somewhere to have fun or somewhere to recreate or somewhere to exercise? I guess you could.
Okay.
But the question here on swim lessons, real quick. A very real price can be put on swim lessons. Children learning how to swim save their lives. If children don't learn how to swim, it will be a hard number to tally. But if people don't learn how to swim, they will drown and die.
We all agree.
The price that you can put on that is 17 cents per thousand of real assessed value. So that's really... One of the reasons we're here tonight is a price is being put on lives, 17 cents per thousand. And I have great hope that the voters will pass the levy.
Okay. But we're here to talk about what if they don't? So we've talked about the levy and we've talked about why it's important. Write letters to the editor, if you would. But for now, we're talking about if it fails, what are we going to do? So, second page. Does anyone have anything on the second page? Which is miscellaneous revenue.
I have questions.
Yes, Mr. Ford.
So, Prairie High School, NWAQ, 3,706,000. Is this, is there any extra staff required when they're in there? And it's going to be kept at 77, so we won't have to adjust the pool temperature? Because obviously, they were part of the big hash we had back when we tried to raise the temperature, and they actually wanted it down. 77 might be even a little cold for them, but anyway.
It'd be around 77, 78, because it'll fluctuate. But yeah, anything below that, what would he say for them?
All right, but they can work with that. So, so that would, that basically, that would be actual revenue over and above costs.
That's revenue, that's revenue.
Yeah, that's revenue.
Cost is the utilities.
Right, right, but that's actual revenue. We're not paying for lifeguards, we're not paying for somebody checking in, and so on and so forth. That's, you'll be checking in and out, or one or the other, you two could check in and out.
I have a question.
Wait, we're taking turns, okay?
Would you assume that you're not going to have somebody, hire somebody else to have them there, check them in and out?
No, one of us would be.
Okay, thank you.
No.
How long would it take if, let's say we shut down the pool, the boilers and all that? How long will it take to raise the pool temperature back up to 77?
We're not going to let go, it's going to stay at 77. So we're already discussing.
You shut everything off, the actual cold temperature is 74 degrees.
Okay, okay, so 74, okay, I got you. I didn't know if it would go any lower than that.
That's a good question.
The ground heated at that temperature.
Do you have any comments on this page? Commissioner Singleton?
I would assume we'd have to keep some heat in the building because you wouldn't let the pipes freeze.
No, that, 74 degrees, that's putting every switch, turning everything off.
Including the heating of the building.
Heating the building, everything is off. It's 74 degrees.
Yeah, okay. Can we still stop?
It'd be great, but yeah.
I guess the only thing that I want to say about this page is, and I'm probably restating myself a little bit, so I apologize if that's the case. I think that we would need to find a case that's more compelling than just these two programs to actually continue to operate the pool in any, I think that it's not, based on the expenses, it's not sufficient to say that this is what we would do. Because then, then we are, we are frittering away money that we have saved in the November, December timeframe in order to throw it at these two programs and to hopefully, the benefit, the other partial benefit of it is to sustain it. So, you know, I think if I had to go back, and I'm going off page here a little bit, but everyone else has to, so I'm doing it. I think we need to look at, I feel like this is the better way to a solution than, I feel like there's nickels and dimes here, and I'm not trying to disparage anyone in any way, but I feel like we're looking at nickels and dimes, and I think somewhere it's like, let's look at the bank account. And so for me, the proposal that I would like to see includes some lap swim, it includes some, it includes some open swim, it includes swim lessons. And I realize everyone might have a different thing here, but I think it's easier to throw something to the wall and have it stick, start to stick than, so I'm, anyway, those are things I'd like to see. I'd also certainly like to see, is there a reason why scuba can't come in if the temperatures reduce? Is there a reason why? I don't know if they're, part of the notes here for, or for a lot of them are empty, and I don't know if there are reasons why there are assumptions, maybe there weren't. I don't see why scuba couldn't still use the pool. I don't see why the kayakers still couldn't use the pool. Those are things that, that we should certainly consider because I don't know of a time when, other than when we bought the new kayaks on, I'll call it false pretenses, sorry, I have to go back to that, you know I do, as new commissioners, but other than that, they seem to always generate revenue, even if it's a smaller amount. So I'm certainly not trying to, anyway, whatever, shut up now. I would love to see those things at a minimum.
The, why is the high school only at 3,700?
It's the last half of the contract year, it could be the boys' season. And that's what this year's revenue from the student's graduating scale over the four years when I did the contract with them.
The girls' gonna send us in November.
But that's why I was, I wasn't sure why we wouldn't have the girls' next.
Well, because I'll, that revenue will already be in, I'll already have that revenue. This is starting, this is starting November.
Right, but through next November, or through next December?
See, I didn't make that assumption that they would start swimming next year.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So this is just the second half of, this is what we get at the beginning of the year, and you were not making an assumption that they would be able to swim next fall?
They might, they might be able to, and then the rate goes up about $2,500 for the season.
Right.
So why did you make that assumption? Sorry, Madam Chair, but why was that assumption made?
Because I don't know that they want to do it that way, or that we would have the revenue to open even more than at that point.
Okay, so then, the private swim team revenue is also based on a partial year?
It's only, it's only based on.
Okay, these are the assumptions, it'd be great to see the information, but.
It's based on, if I shut the boy, the boys' swim team from the high school shuts down, then if there's.
When would that shutdown be? This is covered through when?
They close in February, apparently in the February.
So through February?
Yeah, basically through February.
Okay, all that covers, all that money is income through February?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Swim school is pretty firm, the NWAQ is just an estimate based on what they do for lane usage.
Yes, sir. And like I said, that's an actual.
I mean, the high school? Sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, the high school is pretty.
No, no, you said the swim school. I'm just trying to clarify for the record. Okay, thank you.
I did have one other question. There was a question about whether we were going to have local meats. That would be a cost, because you said we would have to have a lifeguard or something.
I factored that in there.
You factored that in there?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Well, then, so part of that 37, then, is going to be, there's going to be costs in there, we have to pay for the lifeguard.
And that's built into their, into their cost on this graduating scale.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know, I know, but this, that's not a total, a total profit of $6,000.
No, this is just.
It's going to be, it's going to be revenue minus, but is there going to be minus the minus costs in there? Like paying lifeguard during the open meet?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And whatever utilities come up.
Yeah, 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 and that's right. And the other thing we have to probably think about, I don't know if you're going to be, we're not going to have anybody to clean up afterwards, so are you going to be doing that? Okay, all right, so we won't have any, we won't have to have any more janitorial because of.
Oh, janitorial services will be gone.
Yeah, I know, I didn't, but I didn't know if you'd considered the fact that, no, yeah, when the kids come in there for the swim meets, they're going to dirty things up. Yes, sir, thank you. And you guys will say you're going to cover that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that page? Next page, salaries and wages. Commissioner Fort?
Okay, so you have training in finance, Director, correct?
No, I'm not, I'm not an accountant, I have.
Well, I thought you did budget some stuff for your previous job.
Yes.
So that would be my question, is why can't you assume that some of the Director of Finance's job, we could save money there?
I'm cutting her by a quarter of what she was normally worth.
I don't know, I would think it could be more.
The way the staff gets done would fall on her knee.
How about Director of Client Services, what is she going to be needing for?
That, that's actually in the communications side of it. This is a number that if I need her, it doesn't mean she'll work one and a half hours for 50 weeks, it just means if I need her, I'm building something in there to come in and do stuff, if I need her.
Like what kind of stuff that you had in mind?
Well, she's a, she's the communications director, so that would be in that area. Then there's also things around ebook, or esoft, and the software program that she's the expert on. I'm not an expert on those things.
I don't know. I mean, maybe we need the full-time Director of Finance and full-time Director of Client Services and a maintenance guy, and not so much the Director. Anyway, okay.
Sure, then serve me a 30-day notice, that's the way you want to do it.
Commissioner Halli. It's to go.
While we're on salary and wages, and there are many different ways this can go down, and hope that we don't get to any of them. If the pool is fully closed down, I think we have to do better than, than the next, you know, I think, I think if there's going to be cuts, I think they're going to be, I don't think they're going to allow for all of this. You know, I fully, I fully believe that we need a maintenance guy very close to full-time on this agent facility. And I know that there are some things that are going to have to happen, that as a maintenance person myself are not what I'm qualified to do. So when we get, when we get to that time, there might be tough choices that need to be made, so.
Like what kind, what do you apply?
What you said may be a reality.
Okay, thank you.
And the levity of that is, all the seniors down, is aware of where we're at, they've been aware of where we're at for a long time, nothing's catching anybody by surprise, and I hope we don't get to that point, you know?
Me too. But we hope, we hope this discussion is going to be a waste of time because.
Absolutely.
Unless the thing will pass.
Oh, please, absolutely.
All right, Commissioner Singleton, do you have anything on this page?
The only thing I would add, so I mean, I echo, I think the similarities between what the previous two commissioners have already said. I have to admit that I do have a difficulty with being in a situation where, based on this, we have the pool open for only two programs, and people are receiving raises, and I have a hard time with that. I don't, I don't think, it doesn't sit well with me, and I don't see how it would sit well with the public either. No, no, it's for 13 months.
It was an increased number of months.
Okay, well, or even, even the same, I mean, even the same amount, so.
Well, yeah, that would be my problem, I mean, because you assume that the, the hot tub's going to be closed down, so maintenance will have, will not have that duty to take care of, that there'll be less employees for you to manage, so that's going to be less work for you to do. That's why I'm thinking we can find ways to sort of absorb some of this other cost that you've got factored in here, but if we're going to be paying full salaries to both of you.
Commissioner Prosh?
No comments.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Does somebody want to make a motion on this page? Say anything other than what we said?
I move that we try and cut the Director of Finance and Admin and Director of Client Services costs.
I'll start the discussion.
Okay, sorry, so it was cut the Director of Finance and Admin?
Decrease, decrease the Director of Finance and Director of Client Services. 2018.
I have a question about that because I.
Could we hold on? Sorry, while we're writing, sorry, I'm not trying to be, we have an initial discussion, though. We have to record the motion.
We can make the motion in seconds, and then you can discuss it in California, can't do it.
So you want to move that we decrease Director of Finance, Client Services, and, did you say the maintenance, too?
No, no.
Just those two?
Director of Finance and Director of Client Services, yes.
Okay. Decrease salary.
They don't, they're not salaried.
Oh, but wages. Wages. Is there a second?
I seconded the discussion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that we decrease the wages of the Director of Finance and the Director of Client Services. Discussion. Commissioner Fort, state your case further, if you wish to, you've already talked about it a lot.
Yeah, basically, I think, I think, as I said, I think the Director, this is something, a lot of, a lot of Director of Finance and Admin, and even the Director of Client Services, the things he talked about being, I think he could assume those duties, almost all those duties. So if we need, we need, if we need somebody with, he doesn't understand computers, and we can hire somebody, maybe we can say, again, we're trying to figure out how to cut the costs, maybe we can have somebody come in who knows how to, give them a little training on the computers before they leave, if that's what he needs.
Mr. Hoffmeier?
I hope a day doesn't arise where we don't have an executive director, however we do right now. So currently, I'm not willing to entertain specific cuts while we have a director. I think that's his job to put that forward.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
I think it could end at a gray area of policy and operations, and so while we have a director, I'm not willing to entertain specific cuts to employees.
Good point. Commissioner Singleton?
I would say at this point, I think, I understand the point of what, of the motion. I just think that until we, until we agree on what those services are and what skills, knowledge, and support they require, I think that it's, I think, I think that this might be a correct motion, but I think now is not the time for it. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I think the other problem I have with the motion is, I think it needs to be specific. And as a board member who's gotten burned by a lack of specificity in the past, I would, I would just suggest that when we have that, what that specificity might be, that that might be more for the discussion. And then, not to try to take issue with what you just said, because I agree with your sentiment, Commissioner Hoffmeier, but respectfully, if that were the case about all of this, then we wouldn't be having this discussion. And I mean, in terms of the appropriateness, you know, in a lovely and ideal situation, one, we'd never be having this conversation. Two, we'd be presented something that we loved. And so, you know, we're, I think we're trying to solution things. I would like to see us understand what programs, because I think, that we think we can run profitably, because I think that's going to drive everything else. And that part wasn't necessarily specifically to you, but I just.
And that's why I seconded it, I thought we needed to have this discussion. I just, it may be that we're having 50 days too early talk.
Yep, agreed.
And Commissioner Prosh?
Well, you might have to look at the legal aspects of some of the cutbacks on, especially the financial aspect over there, because if you're taking in revenue, from what I understand, this is a federal, a federal facility, a federal tax, supported by taxpayers, right? Okay, this is a federal entity, right?
No.
This is a special purpose district.
Okay, so with that right there, anything that takes in revenue, takes in anything, has to have a full-time accountant. You might want to look into a, the law about that, because I actually read about that quite a few years ago, of when they're looking into billing the transit system here on the island. So you might want to look into something like that.
I don't, I'll look into that, I'll let you do that. I don't think that it's required. What is required, though, is a, is a check and balance. And me doing it all means I do it all, there's no check and balance, so there has to be a check and balance.
We have to have an audit.
And that's an audit, no, no, that's not, that's not an audit. That means, one of the, one of the things they hit us on in the previous audit was, there was no, there was no, people who were accountable were the ones doing the entry. Where I, as the auditing officer, I don't do anything except audit it. So there has to be that separation there. I don't think, to that extent, I think that's where you're, where you're right, but I don't think that I'm required to have a full-time accountant. I just have someone who's not me, who's the auditing officer, or the director at that time, who's not the auditing officer doing the entry.
Well, and to be clear, we don't have a full-time finance person, and secondly, we do not have an accountant. So just to be very clear that.
I agree with Commissioner Hoffmeier that it should be up to the executive director to determine where the cutbacks should be for his personnel. Because that's exactly what it is, is his personnel that he has got to manage. And if he's got to lay people off or cut people's salary, that should be his job. Shouldn't be our job to say, hey, nope, we don't need this, when in all actuality, he probably does need that. We don't see day-to-day operations, he does. That's what his job is. So he should be determining on who should be cut, who should have what in his workforce, not us telling him what to do. We tell him, hey, you got to do this, he makes that decision.
So what are we having a discussion for this page? I thought that was, we were supposed to have our inputs. If we're not going to have our input, then he can make the decision. You don't even need to have the discussion.
For this aspect, for this aspect, because if he's doing the day-to-day operations on that, he should be the one that is actually.
Then we don't need to have any further discussion, let's just go on.
No, stop saying that. We're chill. So I am wanting to see a lessened schedule projection, and we're going to need those people probably, and we'll need more people. So I would, I am kind of opposed to the, to this motion for that reason. Because I do, I think it's, whatever you said, 50 days early, whatever. But Commissioner Hoffmeier, yes?
On the same topic here. So I described why I thought that was data to the operations versus policy. However, we could say 151,888.14 isn't acceptable, and we could say that we feel that needs cut to 100,000. And then we could all be saying the same thing. That's just an arbitrary number that I haven't researched yet. But I thought that would be policy, and then he could decide where to make the cuts.
That's all I'm saying, I never said eliminate any of those positions. I said, cut, we try to figure out ways that you could assume more of the responsibility and have less usage of it. Basically saying the same thing, rather than giving them an arbitrary number, I'm just saying that you're suggesting.
And that's why I seconded it, because I thought we were pretty close there.
Okay, so the motion is that we decrease the wages of the Director of Finance and Director of Client Services. Do you want, you still want the motion to say that?
We look into decreasing the cost of the Director of Finance and Director of Client Services and have.
The motion would be not looking to.
Yeah.
We need to be specific.
Yeah.
Today was-
Looking into, and then-
Wait, wait, stop.
Cutting it are two different things, looking into it, is we're gonna discuss it more, or we're gonna, we're gonna decrease it, that's two different things right there. So is it gonna be looking into it, or decreasing it?
I didn't say we're gonna eliminate, I said, this is the whole thing, we're making suggestions. My suggestion is, this is possibly one of the ways we could save money.
Okay, Commissioner Ford, your current motion is that we decrease the wages of the Director of Finance and Director of Client Services. Do you wish to modify that motion? How do you wanna modify it?
Okay, so, I look into, we, we, I suggest that Director look into assuming some of the responsibilities of Director of Finance and Director of Client Services, to possibly decrease the projected cost for two thousand eighteen.
Y'all, we can't keep modifying the, the motion at the end, 'cause then we gotta go through discussion all over again.
I can-
I'm sorry, but-
I remove the motion, and let's, let's move on.
Okay.
You're gonna rescind the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make the motion?
Yes.
I move that we decrease the projected two thousand and eighteen shutdown salary and wages by one-third.
Second.
Okay, wait a minute, so say it again, for me?
I move that we decrease the projected two thousand and eighteen shutdown salary and wages by a third.
Can you say it again? Sorry, that's, sorry, this is, please say it again.
We decrease projected two thousand and eighteen shutdown salary and wages by one-third.
Hoffmeyer.
Thank you.
Seconded, Ford. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we decrease the projected twenty eighteen shutdown salary and wages by one-third. Your argument, Mr. Hoffmeyer.
Can we do a second now?
You already did.
You already did.
Well, I did, I did, okay.
I heard you-
It's been discussed enough, you know, I hate that we're here, but we are.
Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Singleton?
Again, I, I, I actually, I respect the intent. I just think we're not, I, I think we're not there yet, in terms of whether that's the right number. So I think it's, I think we're early, again, on this one. But I respect where you're going, and I think that this would be valuable to have at a later point in time.
Commissioner Frosch?
I think we should include on there, not just one-third, but look into decreasing it into one-third, instead of setting a full one-third, instead of doing that. Let me rework.
You wanna be iffy, is that what you're saying?
So if one-third is too much, or too little, we could increase or decrease it to a little bit, or-
I mean, I think we can-
Just give us some little wiggle room.
I would be, I would be willing to amend it, however, we are a board that's gonna continue to make-
See, I didn't think we were supposed to be specific tonight, I thought we were gonna make suggestions, this is a suggestion.
Exactly.
It doesn't mean it's gonna be, that we're gonna end up, this is gonna come back to us in next, next week. I thought the whole idea was, give us some suggestion, so you can come back to us next week with, after thinking about some of the suggestions.
Madam Chair, point of order, as it relates to this, is that is not, I mean, that's, that's not what we're voting on here. We're saying, this is what we want it to be, and that's what we'll support. And, and so, what I, what I didn't hear was, hey, let's try that, to spitball it, to see if it works. Like, I didn't hear anything conditional about that. And so, that's part of the, if, if, if that's really what we wanna see, then I, there needs to be language around that.
Could you give us a language, please?
No, because I don't support it, so I really shouldn't need to.
Why were you doing any motions anyways, if we're just discussing? Let's not do any motions, it's just, I think we're supposed to here, give the Executive Director some ideas. If we're doing motions, that's what we want him to do, via what we are trying to do right now, which is, we're trying to decide for next meeting, what we're already decided for this meeting, right? We're just supposed to give him instructions on, hey, give us some ideas of what we can do for this. Look into the one-third cut-down of the salary. Look into doing some extra duties for the remaining personnel that are working. Look into this, look into that, not, we're gonna do this. 'Cause that defeats the purpose of this meeting, and defeats the purpose of next week's meeting, because we already decided it. So let's just make suggestions, and just go from there. No motions, 'cause this is no motions, this is suggestions.
Problem is, we're a board of five, and each individual, one of us, has no more power than the other, to do anything. And so, if I say something, and it's not backed up by a motion, he doesn't have to take that for anything. So, if we want him to actually do what we, the, and, have you sat in on our board meetings? We are five very different people, and we come up with some, you know, very amazing things. And so, I kinda think it's probably better if he has a more, some good direction of where the board looks like we want him to go. And that's what he wanted from us, is where do you, the board, want us to go?
Then I suggest, if we're making a motion, then we make it as a suggestion, and not a, we're gonna do this.
No, because motions are motions, they're not suggestions, they are, the board has made a decision.
Then why are we at this meeting, then?
To make decisions.
To make a decision, or to give the Executive Director some options.
And we have done that.
Okay, then if we did both, then why are we making any motions, and if we're giving them both? We're making suggestions, that's what this whole meeting was for, right? Suggestions.
It's a, it is a working group, but again, I'm telling you, I've been on this board for a couple of years, almost three now, and it's like, yeah?
Okay, that's how it's supposed to be, five different people, five different views of how things should do.
Yep.
It's up to the Executive Director, I think, to get all the suggestions on everybody on the board, and come up with suggestions of saying, hey, this is, I think, feasible for your suggestion, but for yours, I don't think this is feasible, and give us the feedback of what he comes up back with. Instead of saying, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna tell the Executive Director, we gotta do this, but then he comes back and says, hey, it's not feasible, then guess what, we're shit out of luck.
Yeah, okay, it's, yes, sorry, I, actually, his job is, I mean, I mean, strictly, it is to do what the board directs him to do, in a certain sense of, out of a meeting like this. So, it isn't to take everything, 'cause if he took every suggestion that we all came up with, there's no way that he could possibly have the bandwidth to complete that. But, sorry, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just, it's just a point of reference, sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we decrease the projected two thousand and eighteen shutdown salary and wages by one-third. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Frosch?
No. Uh, no, no, no answer, I abstain from that.
The Chair votes no, does not pass.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote, Commissioner Frosch?
Abstain.
Commissioner Huff, or Singleton?
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
I, I was, I was, I'm perplexed, I thought abstain, abstentions do it with the majority, and when there's no majority, I don't know what happens.
It's, it's no vote, so that's, yeah.
The Chair has the right to tie a vote as well, so yes.
Yes, and when there's a tied vote, then it's, no. It doesn't pass, so. I don't think abstentions go with majority, anyway, I think this is just like, it's as if he wasn't here, so, it's all fine. Okay. Next page, anything?
What's page four?
Yes, so it's sick pay, payroll benefits, minor purchases.
Same, what's this, can we modify this? Pool chemicals obviously would change, depending upon what we came up with, and if it's-
I'm sorry, I didn't-
The pool chemicals obviously would change if we had certain periods where we were open for things, and periods where we don't, so that might, that, that price would change, and that would be, that would be something to please add in there, in that consideration that I asked you to do.
Anything else on this page?
Sure, two things. One is, I would, and maybe this has already been done, but I would certainly look at some of our service contracts to understand what flexibility exists in those, to change our services. So for things like the IT service contract, obviously, if not, things like the security of the building. But, but I would look at those. The other thing that I personally would suggest, I really am trying to be, oh, I thought we were on, what page are we on?
Page four.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were to do that.
Yeah.
No, no.
Oh, sorry, I skipped ahead, I, no, I didn't, actually, we are, oh, sorry. Sorry. Nope, I'm good. Apologies.
What does elected not to accrue vacation during closure mean? Does that mean they're gonna take it, and so it's?
No, it means that whatever we have going into that period of time, is what we have. We've, we've elected not to accrue anymore, to create, to decrease the obligation of the district to pay us.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It's a voluntary decision on the, if I'm the maintenance director myself.
Take your leave.
Maybe we can do that legally?
I can, I can, I can elect to decline it for a period of time, yes.
Okay, all right, put in there, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's actually a very good question, thank you. Okay, so anything else on this page? All right, now page five, Commissioner Singleton?
Sorry, my apologies.
That's okay.
Um, I, yeah, I got lost. So I, I would just reiterate what I just said about, if there's any flexibility in our service contracts, as-
Which one?
Uh, for example, IT service contract. If, if, if we have, I mean, if, if we have very little, if we have very few people working for us, and if we have very few operations, it, it seems like that would be a, a really large amount of money to be paying someone for very limited services.
Well, it's not limited services, he does stuff for us behind the scenes all the time.
Oh, no, no, oh, sorry, let me clarify before you finish. If we have limited services and operations, limited transactions, we have no, if, if we have limited operations, then it seems like that would be a bit of overkill. That's what I'm saying.
And it won't change my response, if you're-
Okay, I, sure.
Yeah, but if, there are a lot of things that goes on, backups, he monitors, all that stuff, that's, we're monitored by, by, we're monitored, he monitors our, our network. So, all the backups, any time there are, updates to things that have to occur, things like anything that a monitoring service, or a network management service would provide, he provides to us in that case there. And in return, we have a, whenever he has to come out and do something that's covered in certain parts, then we, then it's covered in the cost. If there are, if it's outside of that, then it's, then it's a cost. If we go to, if we eliminate this, and there's no way, and I already talked to him, there's no, you just can't go piecemeal what we want. It's this, or we go to not having it, and paying it by the hour, and that, the price will go way up to, it'll be over a hundred dollars an hour, like a hundred and five dollars an hour, for every time you need him.
And, and I've heard from other local groups that pay a lot less, and so I think that perhaps their service level is slightly different, and, and that's part of what I'm talking about, is perhaps there are slightly different SLAs. I'm not sure if we have, you know, three employees or four employees, and I'm, I'm not trying to be ridiculous by saying that, but I'm not sure that we need full backup protection, UPS.
We have government data on there, I mean, all of our stuff, this has to be available, has to be able to be accessed.
I, I'm, I am lodging, and I am not changing my response either, that I think that, in, in the case of, we are open for no transactions, other, and we are only open for certain things that we are doing very limited business, I think this is overkill, that's the point I'm trying to make. And if we're saying that there's no flexibility, then we understand that this is absolutely a fixed cost. I, I find that difficult to believe.
I, I tend to agree, all we're doing is suggesting, look into it, is there other ways to get the services we need without having to pay this full IT contract? And, so I-
Not, not if we're gonna get the level of service we have, probably not.
Well, we, we don't need the same level we have right now, but have the, have the required coverage that we need, not the same level that we have at right now. So just to have a required level that we need for, during the shutdown. And so, it would seem to me, yeah, maybe, maybe it hap, maybe we can't, we can't do anything into it, but you can look into it.
Additionally, sorry, I hadn't finished. The, the one other thing that I wanted to bring up, I'd already stated on our previous page, what programs I think we should investigate, but as it relates to credit card processing, I think that the approach we should take, assuming that it's a legal course of action, and I believe it is, but I'm just saying that because you hear rumors, and you don't know what's true. But I would think that we would, we would be okay with credit card processing, that we would just add the fee, we would add fees. That's the way that I would prefer to approach it, rather than expecting people to have cash when they walk in the door. I think that's unrealistic.
And I disagree with that completely, I think, I agree with the Director, I think we can go to credit card process, cash only, we're not going to have that many things, that, that doesn't mean it's a cash only, they can pay by check, is that correct? Those cash or check?
Which I'm not sure that that actually helps us, because we have no way of validating a check, and that actually causes, that, that can cause, so-
If the checks are paid ahead of time, and if it bounces when he takes it in, then we just cancel them. And we're not, they're not paying after the fact, they're paying before the fact, is that correct?
Yes, they pay before.
Yeah, so there we go.
Okay, well, this, that's based on, so again, I'm, I'm gonna go with my world of, that we're offering some services, right? That it's not just two programs that I don't think can justify keeping the pool open. Again, opinion, only opinion. But in this case, I'm saying that I think that it behooves us to look into a credit card processing solution if we expect to run some transactions.
Again, I, I, other, other businesses are starting to charge extra for credit card usage, or doing away with it, so I, I go along with the Director's input on that.
Well, we could just do it where it's like, it's part of the, the fee, and you get a discount if you pay with cash. Meaning, and that's how people look at it, and that's like, ooh.
That's the way most people do, yeah.
You know, so, look into that.
Thank you, that was all.
Commissioner Frosch?
No.
Okay, next page, six.
I think Commissioner Hoffmeyer would-
Do you have anything on page six, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, actually, I do, I've talked about the port-a-potty, but, under insurance, you have fifty, there's fifty thousand eight hundred dollars for two thousand and eighteen. That's, that would be collected in, that's, is that counting, is that the time, is that the one that's gonna be paid in December of two thousand and seventeen? How about the one that's due in December of two thousand and eighteen? He has to now agree, the levy passes, but we don't get any money until two thousand and nineteen. Doesn't that have to be factored in? We're gonna have to be paying in December of two thousand and eighteen.
Isn't that fifty thousand eight hundred is what we pay in twenty seventeen?
Twenty, that's, that's what I just said, it's, that's the one that's gonna be paid December of two thousand and seventeen, but we, he's, he's been factored in, we're closing on, we're, we're figuring, he's figured this all in up here, when he figured in the reserve, or the amount of levy money we get in November and December. So, he, he figured that fifty thousand eight hundred is paid in December of two thousand seven, or two thousand and seventeen of this year, and then we're gonna have to pay another fifty thousand eight hundred in two thousand and eighteen of next year, which he didn't figure in, and we won't be getting any money before that time. So that's an actual fifty thousand eight hundred dollars increase in cost.
Other than whatever option that we go with, or some operating tempo that we have, that any revenue that comes in through there, of and beyond-
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, but you gotta, you gotta come back to those.
Would add to the revenue side.
Yeah, 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 but you better-
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you're right.
Right, I was saying, this increases costs, I didn't say-
It only went down fourteen thousand dollars. When I went to a complete shut, I said, give me a complete shutdown, it went down fourteen, it's based on revenue.
Yeah, 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 so you're right, yeah, but again, you guys have to factor, they have to go back and ask them that, if we open one month, two, three times a year, how much does that gonna increase?
That won't change the number, well, it will actually, it would, because I would get-
But you said it would increase it slightly, but can't increase it much, it only went down fifteen hundred, so.
Well, it went down fourteen thousand.
Oh, fourteen thousand, oh. All right, anyway, so yeah, that's something else to consider. But in any case, it's still, that's still more money that you hadn't figured into the, across that we, you hadn't figured. Okay, that's, that's all I have. A substantial increase.
And when you're doing the budget, you said the electricity, no real way to estimate this, it's probably a low estimate. Don't ever go with the low, you know, you've gotta put in the high estimate, so that we know what's the worst, because then we'll have to start- know what's the worst, because then we'll have to start whittling some other numbers, because we have a finite amount of dollars to deal with. So, I would, I would go higher on that estimate. Commissioner Singleton, do you have anything on page six?
I do. Let me make sure I'm on the right page. Sorry. Given memberships, I would think that, depending on our situation, perhaps we would need to retain the American Red Cross, but the other ones, I'm not sure why we would retain those, especially given that like our concessions are at zero in the revenue thing.
Good point.
So, I don't, sure.
On the sub-chamber, okay, the Costco, if we open, let's just say that every other month we were open, that would still give us the opportunity to sell concessions at the front if we chose to do that.
Okay, and depending on where we end up, but, and this is where, I'm waffling now, too. I got it. But, but part of it is, based on what we see here, there would be no need to have it. Right?
If we did, if we shut down, yeah.
Yeah, based on what we see here, and so that's, to me, it's, it's variable.
Right.
Right? It would, it would depend on the utilization, you know, the optimization of those, of whatever those services are. Because I think, well, anyway, whatever, yes. And then there was another, so the landscaping maintenance thing, I would personally also say, in that case, we should probably look at, you know, there's a question as to, can we consider going to half the amount and cutting the cost, which I'm assuming that's what that third, the thirteen fifty-eight is, sorry, isn't, is total, is, that would be cut in, okay, so it would be cut in half. I personally would say, yeah, let's, let's let the grass hairs go a little longer.
Well, if it's any explanation for this summer, they mow dandelions a lot.
Hire the local kids for ten bucks an acre.
I'm like, I'm pretty sure I can do that.
I think the lowest bid, Commissioner, you know?
There you go. I'll do it for ten bucks. I can't, nothing better to do.
Hire. Cool.
Do you have more?
I need benefits, though.
And only coffee you can drink.
What's that?
We'll give you a Snickers at the end, is that a good idea?
Hey, there we go. Snickers and the Coke. Snickers and the Coke.
I would just have questions, and I think it depends, I think it's all going to depend, but I would have questions about some of the communication stuff, and if there are opportunity for temporary reductions, I don't, I...
Okay. Done?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Frasch? Page seven. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, I mean, as far as any of the memberships, the bottom of the page, and I think we need to probably wait until next week to see, post a new or rat meeting.
We know it's going to be fifty thousand dollar hire. I had one question. Have we heard anything on electric services for the past election yet?
I'm sorry, they what?
Have we heard anything on the past elections?
Yeah, we just got the bill. I was going to tell you that.
Oh, good, thanks.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand?
Yeah, we were the only, only show in town for that.
Three thousand, that was for the last, the last one was, we were two, there were two people on there.
No, not inside the city, outside the city, yes, we were, but...
It was thirty-two thousand, not three thousand two hundred.
No, 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 I was clear. Thirty-two, comma, zero, zero, and some change in there.
For the levy that we just did?
Just got the bill from the owner.
Holy mackerel, what's it going to be this time?
Oh, this time, there is a bunch of...
Well, there's a bunch of, yeah.
Then this five thousand dollar estimate is just crazy low.
So, for this November, there'll be a bunch of different things on the ballot, so it's spread across that cost. So, next year in November, it would be spread across whatever is on the ballot during that time, and so...
So, you think it's going to go from thirty-two thousand down to about five thousand dollars for us in November?
We won't be the only ones on there. I, it will depend on what else is on there, and I don't have a...
I would guess, there's not that much on there. There's not a national, there's not a national thing on there next year, there is national.
Well, next year, it would be...
I still think that five thousand's got to be low, but thirty-two thousand, that's just, I just flabbergasted. You didn't, did anybody think it was going to be that, no?
No way. We were like thinking ten thousand.
Yeah.
Because that's what we've sort of been told it was in the past. Don't ever run a levy in November, in August again, because...
We have no matter, so I would...
There's no way.
Holy crap.
If they'd said it's going to cost you twenty thousand, I would have said, let's not do it, let's wait till November. Oh, my God. We suck. We so suck. Okay. Anyone else have any questions on the last page?
Intergovernmental, that's audit, is that accurate?
Oh, well, that's all, I think that's, yes.
Or that, or that's actually total, never mind, never mind.
Yeah.
Never mind, never mind. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I want to just go back and reiterate what I, what I think on my, thank you so much for that, that's fair.
That's probably a good idea.
Okay. So, I'm going to go back now and look at, see if there's a way to cycle on and off, basically.
Yes, sir.
When we work a period of time, whatever that is, could be...
Try to group, everybody wants to use it during that time.
Yeah.
PRT.
Which we do a good job now.
The base can work their PRTs, you know, take a little planning, everybody's part.
Right. And then, part of what I would look at in there would be kayak lessons, if I got that. I'll look at aerobics in there, if that's correct, which, and then swim school, of course. Scuba, I just never got a word back from, from them on anything. They're, they're not, it's, almost you have to go to the store to talk, to get an answer, but I would think that even during cold water, they're trained to go out into the sound, so it's, I would just say...
They got dry suits on, come on. Dry suits, yeah.
They're in wet suits when they're in there, so...
Yeah, yeah, they'll be fine.
Let's see. Obviously, I would look at, if we crank up and then crank down, crank up, I'm going to have to look at utilities, or at least come up with some estimate on utilities and staffing in there.
Trash and everything else.
I'll look at the, I will look in the IT service contract, and credit card processing. I mean, that's kind of a simple thing to figure out what change to charge something from there, if that's the way we want to go. At the end, I will look at the dues and memberships, whether or not we still need the chamber and/or Costco, depending on if we want to, maybe we don't want to be in the concession business. It makes, it does make a profit, but it's not a big profit, but that, as a staff, we'll think about that. Going half on the maintenance going there. Obviously, the electricity go up, so it would, I think electricity would be something more than half of what we normally do, because even in the month down, electricity, even though we'll have almost all the lights off that we won't need, it'll still be something in there.
Insurance.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's fifty thousand.
Insurance, will that be based on projected revenue, because that's what that'll come to.
But we also have to add in 2018 costs, if you didn't figure that out.
Yes, and I have that, and I got to even find it again. Oh, there it is. Okay, I got that one.
Can I also, I didn't hear open summer, lap summer at all?
I will, if I open for summer, it only makes sense to try to get as much use out of the pool as I can.
I just wanted to be sure that we were all on the same page.
Yes.
Okay.
Including the kiddie pool, I guess.
You want a lap summer in the kiddie pool?
No, 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 the parents can come in and bring their kiddies in, or in circle.
Yeah, let's just make this pay the normal company.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And pay for that, yeah.
And I would look at what prices to charge.
Yes.
So, that they're paying for, you know, the water and the maintenance, and it's like, we have to raise prices. It's going to have to happen.
Well, that actually, that actually is good, because that, so that there would be a whole new pricing structure, and price suggestions to the commission to approve.
Maybe we should ask the commissioners, do we, in my opinion, this is still a facility that's owned by the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District. Even if the levy fails, they, this facility has been supported by the residents for years, decades. I would still say that we should have a structure where people who are outside the district pay more than people who live in the district. And I would say, we need to start charging for the people that walk in for one time. They've got to charge an out-of-district rate.
Absolutely.
And, you know, because we, just need to.
Can we look at this for a second, Joe?
There was something on there I wanted to look at real quick. On this cooperation agreement.
If we get, before we get off of the P and L, just, I think the way that I had kind of envisioned this going, we would have a base on, and maybe, maybe now we have that baseline. Hopefully, you have what, you feel like you have something you can work with now. Okay, good. So, we, as a board, agreed to what we saw and determined as overhead costs, and again, costs, a difference, the difference being between price and cost, which, which obviously there has to be a delineation. And, and so, the way that I would personally see some of, some of this going is, is looking, is doing that same calculation that we would do for cost, and that's based on how we would set our prices. Again, I realize other people might have other ideas about it, but since it's the baseline that we've already agreed to as a board, it seems like the most logical step from my perspective. Are you following me? Okay, we've agreed to it as a board, so, I mean, it's, that's, but, but the nuance, as we went through all these pages, was what these, what these rows, sorry, always do that, what the rows contain, and which ones contain it. And so, it's really a, the calculation should be able to be determined, it's just the final numbers that we believe that we end up with, and at what point we, should we decide to offer additional services, at what point we decide we need to modify them based on where we're at.
Right.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. Sorry. Since you, I knew you wanted to move on, but I wanted to finish there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we good to move on to this?
Right. And was that, are you good with?
Yes, I have a question on all.
Okay. Yeah, and get five different answers.
Someone who cares.
You can call a person, think you get the answer one.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, go ahead.
Yes, so on this cooperation agreement between the City of Oak Harbor and Northwoodby Park and Recreation District from 1981, you know, the city owns the land, obviously, you know, on page three, line item eight there, it says, "Lack of funding. In the event the district is unable to continue to maintain and operate the facilities because of a lack of sufficient funds, and said facilities are to be closed, the city shall have the option of assuming the responsibility for the maintenance and operation of the facilities, if it desires to do so. In the event, city does assume responsibility for the maintenance and operation of said facility. It agrees that all residents of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District shall be treated on a basis equal to the residents of the City of Oak Harbor. The purpose of this paragraph is to ensure that all residents who are paying for the construction of said facility shall be treated equally." So, that may be interesting, open into the future. You know, but also, on that same topic, you know, there are decisions that have been made that haven't been Northwoodby Park and Recreation decisions, you know, a hundred and four million dollar wastewater treatment plan. Some people say we needed it, some people said we didn't, it's getting built. My water bill's almost two hundred dollars a month.
Wow.
It's almost two hundred dollars a month for the water bill, and it's hard, it's hard to keep it turned on some months. You know, the voters of the, of the Oak Harbor School District, which is effectively almost the same downer line as the NWPRD, we've been, we've been very, very good to the children of Oak Harbor and the district. The Navy, the Navy does a lot of good things in town. I bought my house four years ago, luckily, but the house that I was renting before I bought my house four years ago, we rented for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. That house is now twenty-one hundred dollars a month.
What's your point?
To get to the sixty percent threshold is very hard. But maybe of no fault of our own, maybe the voters are simply out of money. You know, there was also a hospital levy in there as well, maybe, and the McClary, the state Supreme Court McClary ruling, maybe we're just simply out of money. And if that is the case, maybe it's high time the City of Oak Harbor, or the school district, such as Amerisville, the school district runs their town pool, or maybe the Navy wants to build us a new pool and contract us to operate it. It, it, it's time that, it's time that people start looking at options.
So, you're, so you're going to have the City of Oak Harbor taxpayers assume all the costs. That ain't going to happen.
You know, I think, but the funny thing is, if you look at the Northwoodby Parks and Recreation District, the city owns the land. If you look at Northwoodby, historically, and on the last election, the NWPRD did very poorly, you know, thirty percent or less support. If you go to, to where actually, we actually are a little further south than the Oak Harbor School District. The Oak Harbor School District's boundary is the middle road through rolling hills, I think it's Sydney. The NWPRD goes all the way past San Fucca, Centralwoodby One and Centralwoodby Two precincts are in the NWPRD, if you look at the precinct map.
Oh, black.
We poll, yes.
A little bit.
We poll very, very poorly down there, less than thirty percent. In Oak Harbor, we get almost seventy percent support, and being that the city owns the land, I don't think the voters of Oak Harbor are going to allow their council members and mayor to let that building fall down, and it may be how it goes down in time, we'll tell. But that's really all I have on it, but I thought it was very interesting that even in 1981, they thought it even...
But it is important to note, this expired and was not renewed, but I believe that, I don't know.
Being that they own the land, I would say that that's our standing and not theirs.
Absolutely, yes.
You know, there's been a lot of letters together, and apparently, there's a lot of Kupco people, people out of our district who kind of like the pool.
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible to try to increase the levy, the levy district rate, so the people who are not, who are, who want to, for example, Kupco, to the Kupco School District, and have them also participate in the levy funding, and then Oak Harbor and Kupco High School could use, could have a swim team, too.